Would you call the vote please?
Robert Prowse, Jason Blair.
Here.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Here.
David Roberts.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here. Would you please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undregarded, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to present Brian Davis, who has an award to present.
Good evening Mayor Lewis, council members. I represent Utility Service Partners and we have been proud partners with the city of Moore for the past year. We're the company that provides the lateral water and sewer line replacements and repairs for your homeowners. And shortly after you as a city council adopted our program is when the tornado came through Moore. And so Mr. Stogner over here, Blake Stogner and myself, we live in Dallas, so we called and said, is there anything we can do? And someone said, yes, just come help us shovel debris into piles so we can kind of get things moving in the right direction. So we came and that day I will never forget. It will forever be etched on my heart. And when we were leaving town, we stopped at the Sonic down here to get, to grab a bite to eat. And here we have just seen all of this devastation and the young lady at the Sonic comes out, this is days after, and she says, how are you doing today? Can I help you? You know, do you need anything else? With a smile on her face. And it just really struck me that her spirit is sort of reminiscent of the hundreds of people that we worked with that day that live here and were out there in the field shoveling it. And that comes from the top down as far as the leadership of you, the city council members and the mayor. And it is contagious and the spirit of Moore is forever, as I said, etched in my heart. So we work with over 250 cities now nationwide and every year we give a leadership award to one of our partnership cities. And we would like to give this leadership award for 2015 to the city of Moore for your outstanding leadership perseverance and resilience.
Thanks. On behalf of the entire city and the city council in particular, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sure. Want us to come down there?
That'd be great.
Or how about you come up here? That way we don't.
I can't go this way.
Go around. Okay guys, you gotta get up and stand in the picture. I've always seen that the leader, they don't take what is mine.
Hey, I'm not, I'm getting out of here.
Hey, come on Steve.
No, but like we're not gonna do a pyramid.
Ah, come on.
Ready, one, two, three.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, Joe, we'll see.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
The trick is to set it down by breaking it.
In terms of boxes.
Alright, and Terry, I hear you have an award.
I do, I have an award also too that I accepted as a part of the council, a part of the city. But Representative Mark McBride and I attended a FLYSH conference last week. FLYSH is the Federal Alliance for Safer Homes. It was in Orlando. And their only goal is to help build safer homes nationwide. And whether that's tornado related, hurricane related, fire related, flood related, whatever. Their goal, it's a 16-year organization, probably 200 attendees, very, very impressive. Engineers from colleges all over the United States, the national weather people were there, insurance companies were there, well represented from everyone. Dealing with safer homes. Anyway, they gave an award to us, the city of Moore, presented to Mark McBride and myself. And it's funny, resilient leadership award. And obviously the city of Moore is resilient. 16-year organization, this is the first time this award has ever been given. It was given to us because of the city codes that we passed. And I can tell you, after sitting through two days of watching these people make presentation after presentation, Mark and I being onstage talking about the Moore story, I am more committed than ever that what we did with our codes is important. So anyway, it was fun to represent the city and the award is terrific and I'll just tell you that to the mayor.
You're fair. Have a seat, Steve. He goes upstairs.
Absolutely.
Thank you sir.
Picture, another picture.
Alright. You guys joined in on this one. Well, thank you very much. Wanted to build on the place just a little.
You gotta have a new wing.
Okay, alright. Item two is the consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held November 17th, 2014. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular park board meeting held September 8th, 2014. Item C is approve updated job descriptions for various positions within the Moore Fire Department. Item D is approve the issuance of $50 stipend to employees as a Christmas bonus. And item E is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2004, 2015, excuse me, 2014, 2015 in the amount of $2,785,930.90.
Moving forward.
Alright, thank you both. We have a motion. Do one of you make a second?
I'll make a second.
Okay, thanks. We have a motion in a second. Everybody get their claims questions answered or any notes or changes to the minutes? If not, would you call for the vote please?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number three is consider adoption of resolution number 80614 pertaining to the general obligation bonds of 2015 approved by a majority of qualified voters at an election held on November 6th, 2012, fixing the amount of bonds to mature each year, fixing the time and place the bonds are to be sold and authorizing the clerk to give notice of said sale as required by law.
Mayor, this is Chris Gander with BOSE, our financial advisor, is here to talk to us about this.
Mayor, since everybody's giving you awards, I'll present you with a box to put one of those awards in.
Okay, hey, thanks.
As I said, I'm Chris Gander with BOSE. Chris Copeland wasn't here tonight, my partner. Y'all saw Terry Hawkins, your bond counsel, straightforward resolution. This is to follow right the date, time and place for your next bond sale. This will be the third series of your park bonds. The date will be January 20th. At that time, we'll be back with bids in hand and hopefully asking you to award to the best bid on that day. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
What was the amount of this one, Chris?
$4,125,000.
Do we need to take action on this? I guess it is an option. Do we have a motion?
Some.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion or questions?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries.
Thank you.
Thank you sir. Item number four is consider approval of a lot split located in the southwest quarter of section 10, township 10 North, range 3 West, being north of Northwest 12th Street and west of I-35. Application by Mark Lawman, Community Development.
Mayor and council, this property is located on Northmore Avenue. It was the site of a former Motel 6 destroyed in the 2003 tornado. The applicant has purchased this property. He's now wanting to split it into two lots. The south lot will be used for construction of another hotel. And then the applicant owns the north lot that he will retain and that is the elevation trampoline recreation center. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The trampoline facility is the building that's over there that's under construction now. You may have seen it over there behind Western says one and behind over in there underway.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion on this item? Anyone opposed to this item? Not to cop a vote.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number five is consider adopting resolution number 80714, programming the Broadway Avenue multi-use trails as a surface transportation program urbanized area and STP-USZA project.
Mayor and council, this multi-use trail along Broadway Avenue has been planned as part of the new park going in since the beginning. But in order to help fund the trail, we are seeking some grant assistance, one of those being to be included in the STPUZA funding. The estimated cost for the trail would be $359,000. These funds would pay for 80% of that cost with the city responsible for the remaining 20%. This is, this is just an application. If we are not successful in securing these funds, we do have some other funding sources that we can try. But this would be a high, highly likely scenario that we would get these funds, so. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, tell me again, what exactly is a designated trail?
A multi-use trail is going to be at least 10 feet wide, whereas your normal sidewalk along an arterial road is going to be six feet. So you have an additional four feet and it is used for things like pedestrian use, bicycle use, roller blade, skateboarding, for other type of modes of transportation, not just walking.
So you can use them for bicycles as well as skateboards?
Yes.
Okay.
You know you got my vote.
Alright, thank you. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Any comments? If not, would you call for the vote?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Here.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number six is consider naming the park located at Fourth and Broadway as Dr. Curtis Berry Central Park, Broadway Park or Legacy Park. I guess we get to choose.
That's right, sir. Mayor and council, the next two items are related in that it's in regards to the naming of the park and the major components in the park, Fourth and Broadway. Just to give you all a little bit of background as to the process in regards to the names. We had a stakeholder group that y'all are familiar with that helped design and really added a lot of input to the park itself. So we met with them, they submitted about 20 names, reviewed those, narrowed that list down to three. And the process from there was we put it online and the community voted and that ended November the 7th. The three names that we took to the public were Central Park, Broadway Park and Legacy Park. Over 3,200 votes were cast. 39% were in favor of Central, Broadway got 33% and then Legacy Park got 28%. So the official name would be Dr. Curtis Berry, if you go with the highest vote total park would be Dr. Curtis Berry Central Park. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Wanna make a motion?
I would make a motion. We go with the name Dr. Curtis Berry Central Park.
Okay.
Second.
Alright, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? If not, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, and I do appreciate all 3,900 people who participated in that. Item number seven is consider naming the recreation center and aquatic park to be located at Fourth and Broadway.
Thank you mayor. Again, the process was the same. About 20 or so names were submitted. It was narrowed down. The timeframe was the same for this. The three names that we took to the public were Station at Central Park now, Central Station and then Iron Horse Recreation Center. About 3,200 votes were cast. 57% were in favor of the Station at Central Park. 28% for Central Station and Iron Horse was 16%. So we would recommend the Station at Central Park. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
I'd make a motion, maybe, David, Station at Central Park.
Alright, thank you both. We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion, questions, comments? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number eight is consider adopting resolution number 80814 restricting certain donated funds, insurance proceeds received after May 20th, 2013 tornado for specific purposes for which the funds were received or as determined by council for undesigned funds.
Mayor, this is a little convoluted and then we sent you out a couple of different documents, so I apologize for that. But the latest resolution is on the table there in front of you. The background of this is in discussions internally as well as with external auditors and with people with HUD. We've gotta be aware of and concerned about making sure we don't have any duplication of benefits with regard to potential HUD monies, the CBGDR funds that we might receive in the future. So it was suggested to us that if we had any undesigned officially or legally undesigned funds as a result that came to us as a result of the storm, the two storms back in 2013, no matter the source, that the city council needed to designate those funds for a specific use. So we had insurance proceeds, pardon me, that we received after the storms. We had a significant amount of money that was donated to the city, as you all recall. We received, Jim, about 2.1 million, is that right? 2.2?
For insurance.
In insurance proceeds, most of that money's been expended to repair the facilities, replace this and that that was needed. So, but, but there's about $600,000 or 593,054 on the resolution that has not been expended and is not designated at this point and not needed for the renovation and repair of the parks or the facilities that the money was for the insurance. So under the insurance funds, you are, we're free to use those funds as the council deems appropriate. You also may recall that we received a significant amount of money and the total current amount is $273,693, just from people all over the world, all over the country. Might have been a dollar or five dollars at a time or $20,000 at a time, whatever it was, after the storms. But there wasn't a designation of those funds. Those, those are the funds that are currently sitting at the community foundation, hopefully earning some interest and they're just parked there at this point. So those funds need to be designated for a purpose. The other funds that we received did have specific wishes or instructions by the folks that donated them. We've got close to $12,000 that was specifically donated to park needs, a little over $6,400 donated that was donated to the fire department. These are funds that are remaining. We had more funds that were donated to various uses, but they've been expended. And then there was another about, pardon me, there's another about $115,000 that was specifically donated to the animal shelter. And then there's a sum of $210,000 that was a part of the original insurance proceeds that are designated, still yet designated for park use. So with all that having been said, we need to designate the funds for which there was a designation by the donors, designated for those uses that they asked for it to be used for. But the insurance proceeds that are left, again, just under $600,000 and the $273,000 we need to designate. My recommendation for that is the insurance proceeds of a little under $600,000, designate that for future construction of a new animal shelter, animal facility. If you combine those funds with the other $115,000 that was donated to the shelter specifically, as well as budgeted funds this year, that's close to a million, about a million dollars that we would have to proceed with a new animal shelter, which will get us a good ways along the way. The other funds, the $273,000, my suggestion is that we go ahead and just put that over into the Shelter More program, the Storm Shelter program. That'll get another 100 or so shelters in the community. I think that would be a good stewardship, stewardship for the funds that didn't have a specific designation, but they wanted it to go to help people. And I think that was a recurring theme of a lot of that money that came in. We need, we want you to help people with it. Whatever purpose you decide is fine, but that's just our suggestions.
Just one comment, you know, there was some, I need reference to the Oklahoma City Community Foundation. I don't think we could have found a better place to do park than, as I saw their annual report. Because as of today, if I remember correctly, their overall foundation fund was 114, 14 plus percent last year.
It's been a good year for invested funds, certainly have.
I'd make a motion to adopt that resolution.
I'll say it. Okay, thank you both. Any other comments, questions?
I just like to say I like the thought process. It's appropriate.
I agree.
Good job. With that said, would you call for the vote?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item nine, A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held November 17th, 2014. Item B is approve the issuance of a $50 stipend to employees as a Christmas bonus. Item C, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2014, 2015 in the amount of $589,277.47. Alright, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Everybody get their claims questions answered, any notes or changes to the minutes? So would you call for the vote please?
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 10 is consider authorization to purchase a backhoe from Central New Holland Incorporated in the amount of $61,844.40 from state contract and wave competitive bidding to replace a 2007 backhoe to be used as trade-in.
Mayor and council, this piece of equipment is in our utility department. And as you can see, it's, the existing backhoe is seven years old. This piece of equipment runs on a regular basis to all main breaks on the water system and then point repairs in our sanitary sewer. And it, it's a much needed piece of equipment. On the state bid, the price is $84,000 and some change. They're allowing over 21,000 trade-in, right around 22. That's about 25% of the cost of this piece of equipment. Staff would recommend approval of this. It's, again, it's seven years old and they're allowing a good price on the trade-in, so the total dollar amount would be $61,844. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
I have one, but I have to ask it to Randy because we're waiving competitive bidding and it's on a state contract with the trade-in. We can do that, right?
Yes, sir, as long as we're getting that price off the state.
Okay, thank you.
Another thing I don't think that you pointed out Stan, that is that it needs repairs at the moment.
Oh yes, I forgot.
And the dollar cost of the repairs was pretty significant.
Yeah, that's a good point. I forgot that. The, one of the outriggers is damaged and the cost for the repairs is more than the cost of the trade-in allowed.
Wow. Okay, anybody wanna make a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Alright, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote please?
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Kavner.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number 11 is consider approval of property and contents insurance policy with AMR, ISC, water and machinery policy with Zurich and physical damage coverage at the city sanitation trucks with Great American Insurance Company with Universal Insurance Company as agent. trucks with Great American Insurance Company with Universal Insurance Company as agent.
Mayor and trustees, our current insurance agent for property is Tom Green with Universal Insurance Agency. Our current property insurance is with the Hartford Insurance Company. Fiscal damage coverage for sanitation trucks is with Great American Insurance Company. Hartford, our current property insurance company declined to renew our policy. We had a loss ratio of four-hundred-and-eighty-four point four percent for the past four years due to weather-related claims, and that'll pretty much get you dropped every time, I would say. Universal Insurance Company shopped the market directly and indirectly, they went through Swett and Crawford, which is a large brokerage firm out of Chicago, thirty-plus companies were solicited. Our current rate for property and contents is about twenty-four point six cents per one hundred dollars of value. The renewal quote with AMRIS through Swett and Crawford is about twenty-six point seven cents per hundred dollars of value. The quote includes property, boiler and machinery, flood, and earthquake, and extra expenses. The quote does not include terrorism coverage. They have given us a couple of options for terrorism, but for us to ever collect on that, it would have to be, it's not just, I mean, there's certain criteria that would have to be declared before that would ever happen. Staff recommends that the MPWA trustees approve the AMRIS policy for our property and contents coverage, including earthquake, flood, and Zurich for water machinery, and Great American Insurance Company's policy for fiscal damage for sanitation trucks, for a total of about three-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, which represents about a five percent increase over last year, and Universal Insurance Company as our agent. And Tom with Universal Insurance is here, if anybody has any questions.
Sounds to me like that the agreement of our office, and we got, it was a pretty good rate.
Well, it is, and the policy isn't quite as good as it was last year either. Last year, we had a blanket policy, and this year, they're going to cover all of our property and even up to a ten percent increase, but under the circumstances, we don't have a lot of choices.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just happy y'all found it.
Yeah, I was very happy Tom could find it for us, so.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
All right, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this side? No, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Upstaying.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number twelve is consider approval of an agreement with Healthcare Highways Incorporated, a preferred provider organization, PPO, to provide network and repricing services at a cost of ten dollars and ninety-five cents per covered employee per month for a term of one year with automatic renewal for successive one-year terms.
Mayor and trustees, Gallagher Benefit Services, the city's health benefit consultants, have researched the market to determine if First Health, which is our current PPO network, was the best network available. Gallagher has recommended Healthcare Highways for our network and repricing services. Gallagher is estimating that we could save around four-hundred thousand dollars per year without reducing the size of our provider network. We could also receive more favorable terms from our excess health insurance, which is the next item on the agenda. The Health Benefit Committee and the staff recommends approval of the agreement with Healthcare Highways. And I have David Fleet with Gallagher here, if you'd have any questions for him.
What would that do as far as, with employees and their preferred health providers?
Well, I would say probably the vast majority of them, they're probably on both networks, on First Health and on Healthcare Highways, and Healthcare Highways has been pretty aggressive on picking up new doctors, hospitals, they'd be more than happy to talk with that doctor if we have a specific doctor, I think most of the hospitals are already on there, but if there was a doctor that's not on there, then all they have to do is submit a form, and if the doctor's agreeable to their terms, then they'd be able to be added to that.
That was a question I asked early on in this, because I didn't want to see wholesale concern or any, any concern, if we could help among employees about having their choice of their doctor, their family doctor, whatever, and, and we've been assured that vast majority of the doctors are on there. If they're not, they can be on there, and if they don't want to be on there, then that's their choice, of course, but.
We even did a little extra checking, in my office, we checked with, like, MD Anderson and, you know, places that we don't use a lot, but if somebody needs it, we want, want to make sure they're on there, and they were.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you.
Just before you vote, I'm sorry, Mayor, we, this is a second or third step, I think, that we've taken with regard to, we did the prescription benefit program earlier, we're trying to go through and do a serious evaluation of our costs, our healthcare costs for our employees, so it's a, everybody knows it's a significant cost to doing business, and it goes up and up and up. It's everything that we can do, we need to do, and still maintain good coverage for our employees, as well as meeting the requirements of the Affordable Healthcare Act and all of those things, so, but this is a big step.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. Item number thirteen is consider approval of excess health insurance policy with Companion Life with one-hundred thousand dollars specific deductible that includes prescriptions and the use of Healthcare Highways PPO network and authorization to change the utilization review contractor to MCM Incorporated.
Mayor and trustees, Gallagher, our consultants, again, has researched the market for our two thousand and fifteen excess health insurance policy. We currently have a seventy-five thousand specific deductible and a thirty-six thousand five hundred aggregating specific. This is, our current policy is for medical only and does not include prescriptions. Our current premium, monthly premium is about forty-seven thousand dollars. Companion Life, our current excess health insurance company, has given us several choices. Our consultants have recommended a hundred thousand dollars specific deductible and the thirty-six-five aggregating specific that includes prescriptions. Prescriptions are becoming more and more a large portion of our healthcare costs, and you don't have to watch very many commercials to see why, it's, they're always introducing some new drugs, and there's some, some new drugs coming on the market now that are extremely expensive, so that was one of the reasons that they recommended adding the prescriptions to our policy. With this option, our monthly premium would be about forty-one thousand, four fifty-one, twenty-three, so by going to that hundred thousand dollar deductible and even adding the prescriptions, our price would actually go down a little bit per month. The consultants have also recommended changing the utilization review contractor to MCM Incorporated, which is just a different group that would actually do our pre-authorization and those kind of things, and they've just got more capabilities than our current contractor at the same price. And it looks like the underwriters every year has to go through and look at all the health of all of our participants, and some of them, they carve out a larger deductible than the, the specific, and it looks like this year, we've only got one person that they're most likely going to carve out, so with a higher deductible. The staff recommends approval of the policy with Companion Life with the one-hundred thousand dollars specific deductible that includes prescriptions and requires the use of Healthcare Highways, which we just, you just approved that, and authorize changing the utilization review contractor to MCM Incorporated. And again, David Fleet with Gallagher is here, if you have any questions on this item.
Okay, anybody want to make a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
All right, thank you, thank you both. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number fourteen is a consent docket. Item A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held November seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY two thousand fifteen, two thousand fifteen, in the amount of two-hundred thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars, eighty-four cents.
Move to approve.
All right, that's good.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Could you call for the vote, please?
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. Item fifteen is citizens, item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda, there's no one signed up to speak, would anyone like to? Item B is items from the city council or trustees.
Mr. Mayor, this last week, or maybe two weeks, it brought my attention that there are, you know, there's some storage units sitting around the city that are these portable storage units, much like shipping parks, and I think that, based in the city manager, we got a pretty big grip on the rest, the use of those in the residential area, but when you get outside the residential areas, we are pretty weak in our coordinates discovering the use of such things, and particularly as to where and how long and that sort of thing, and I think that that's something, because.
They look pretty bad.
There's some clutter already, and we, we don't want that to develop into a pattern.
I agree. The only problem is Walmart uses them for layaways, so.
Well, that's one of those things that we'd have to study, you know, but, and.
I agree with you, I think we need to look at it pretty bad, because that, and we have all kinds of weird signs going up everywhere, you know, we buy old houses, any condition, I mean, there's about fifty of those things out, hey, this looks tacky, and it's like, you know, I know the tornado's come and gone, but it's been seventeen, eighteen months now, it's time to come down.
But, I don't know, maybe it's something that suits that, look at, and maybe give us direction on it, something.
I agree with you, that'd be great.
David mentioned this to me, and I suggested that he bring it up, so you all be aware of it, there's a number of them around Old Town, there's a number, number of them around just around, and it may be that we would also need to just make sure on our, on the residential side, that we, we have that tied as well, because, you know, there's, there's probably occasions where people need these for a temporary period of time after the storm, you know, there was lots of use of these things, but I think some people are beginning to use them permanently.
Yeah. I have absolutely no gloves with, you know, temporary use of those and so forth, but so, maybe take that a step further.
Yep, yeah.
We will also do that.
Okay.
I would like to, you mentioned Paul Box, who's a pastor at First Baptist Moore for seventeen years, and he died. His funeral's going to be tomorrow at two PM, you know, him and Patty were really a important part of the life of First Baptist Church, moving it from its old location to the new location, care a lot about the people in this community, and really a, just a man who lived out all the things that he preached, and he'll be, he'll be missed. It's sad for us missing, but it's, it's good for him, and he's to go and be home and be back with his wife, Patty.
James? All right, item, city manager and trustee manager.
Chief, if you want to come up with Joe there, but I'll also mention the flyer, come in here, a flyer on your desk here, but this is the Old Town Christmas activities that are happening this weekend. That has become a really exciting event for Old Town and for the city. Friday evening, the, several activities, the, the main one is the Holiday Gale at the Public Library, Moore Public Library, and a whole group of activities Saturday during the day, all day, and I'm assuming this, Deidre, is on the city's website, so people can go look at that, and I know it's been on Facebook and around, so encourage people to do that.
City manager, I just did notice on Friday, Santa Claus is going to be at two places at one time.
I've always wondered about that. I've always wondered about that, I don't know how that happens.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, we have with us Sergeant Joe Williams, he's been with us for about six and a half years, he went to John Marshall High School, and before coming to the police department, he worked for seven years at Dayton Tire, and he was there when they closed down, and decided to go back to school after that, and got his associate's degree in criminal justice at OSU in Oklahoma City, and came to work for us, and we don't like to see businesses go out of business, but in this case, we benefited from that, because Joe does an excellent job for us, and we're happy to have him, and we appreciate the work that you did, Joe.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, item sixteen is a draw. Thank you.
David Roberts.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Scott Singer.
Yes.
Terry Cavanagh.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes, item carries, we're close, all right.